The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, May 25th, 2023.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the town of Ely. We're thankful not only for this place, but for the people that give us such joy as we live here. Lord, we pray for your continued blessings on our town. We thank you, Lord, for the ability to work and for the responsibilities and being able to fulfill them. I pray this evening for our mayor, for the city council, for all those who work for the city. Ask for your blessings on them. I pray that they are able to know the needs of the people in town, that they seek justice and righteousness in all that they do. I pray, Lord, that they know the needs of this community and serve them. And, Lord, there's always different points of view. We recognize that. But we ask that there be unity and wisdom this evening that great things can be accomplished. And we pray all this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Councilman Trask.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilwoman Hallworth is absent tonight. Councilwoman Williams Harper.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Treasurer, HR Director Trask.
Here.
City Attorney Puthman.
Here.
City Public Works Supervisor Craycraft.
Here.
City Engineer Almer.
Here.
City Police Chief Henry.
Here.
City Building Official Peterson.
Here.
City Municipal Court Judge Costa.
Here.
And that is all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item two, public comment. Please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes. And as a reminder, the council is only hearing public comments with reference to agenda items at this public comment. If you have something of general interest or something that's not on the agenda, they don't have to wait until the final comments.
Do I just walk up there? I'm sorry, this is my first time here.
That's quite right.
If I'm not in the protocol there, you will have to apologize. I'm here to speak, well, for Karen Hay because she's in St. George's Hospital, had an open eye surgery. So, the first item here, discussion for possible action. He was there the night, Thursday night, five o'clock, two hours before the show was supposed to start. They were already paid for, and everybody knew it was going to be going on for at least a week. It was published everywhere. And she's been doing these for 20 years, and regularly, at least through a lot of these twice, any time any of these shows are going on. Nobody ever said anything for 20 years, and now all of a sudden, it's cost her a ton of money, just for the socks. Things are starting to break out. And it didn't give any specifics, it just quoted some, actually, something that just about was what segment we're talking about today. And that's true if it wasn't approved before then, that seems pretty unfair. And that's, there was no specific charge, just the statutes were quoted. So, like I said, she lost a lot of money, and just the time is starting to pick up a little. So, it just doesn't seem right to me, and it doesn't, without an actual item being specified that supposedly she was guilty of. I don't see anyone to do this, say, well, you can't do it tomorrow, or tomorrow night. Or for the foreseeable future, I guess, until she gets back and can talk to people. But I know she had a discussion one time with whatever, about what to do with those shows, and we just have to blackout the windows so the little kids can't look. Because it's dancing, but it's not. They don't do anything rude or whatever they call the sexualized, it's like, provost show, basically. So, that's, I guess, what I have to say about that. Yeah, did that last in three minutes?
What is your name?
Janet Shoemaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your bid item, AB1, you consider drafting an ordinance regulating certain dancing adult performances, et cetera, within the city of Ely. Nothing is done before the Regional Planning Commission, the event. An event is coming about to which local business was noticed at the last hour and suffered $2,000 to $3,000 in costs, and even more in loss of business. That business has conducted the entertainment acts for 20 years or more. Officers have walked through, observed the performances for years. At no time up to now has there been a concern, what has changed? Why was the business owner not notified of any concerns so that a cancellation could have been made and saved the business owner thousands of dollars? It is neglect on the city's part, and restitution needs to be paid. It appears the city is selectively trying to hamper certain businesses that look the other way for others. Discrimination must be stopped. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, AB4, regarding possible approval of interlocal agreement for police protection between the city of Ely and White Island County, there was nothing in the meeting packet provided so the public and city will be contemplated. The new open meeting, the Nevada Open Meeting Law, requires back material to be provided three days prior to the meeting. You provide a animal control and Ely Shoshone Tribe Agreement, but no police protection agreement for anyone to view. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, item 8B9, you're to consider amending the Ely City Code and parting increasing of officials' salaries. The increases proposed are excessive, and they should not be more than 10%. You can't sustain that kind of expense. Recently, you gave one official approximately $40,000 to $50,000 more than the person he replaced, and that person that was replaced had been with the city for approximately 26 years. What are you trying to do, insult him? The good old boy mentality needs to stop, and you need to revisit the city personnel manual and its regulations. You're not doing that. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, AB16, I propose a fee to extend a permit that was taken out timely, but the contractor failed to show up within the time limit. Qualified contractors are hard to find, so you're stuck when somebody do show up. I don't want to pay anyone I have to. I don't like waiting, but that's the way it is right now in this community. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, AB12, regarding your report group, I want your contact information. Mr. Mayor, on May 22nd, 2023, I was going to check, I don't read that.
Thank you. Mr. Trachis.
Georgetown, we have people.
Mr. Trachis, that's your three minutes. Thank you.
And you're going after other businesses.
Is there any other public comment?
Yeah, neglect the issues, man.
Mr. Trachis, that's been three minutes. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And we'll move on to item three, mayor discussion for possible action approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. I'll move to approve. Motion from Councilman Carson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from council, no any further discussion. I will be taking further due to items out of order tonight to accommodate some schedules, but we'll get through everything sooner or later. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. City Treasurer reports, Police Chief.
I'm not sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fire Chief.
Sorry.
Now Police Chief. Municipal Court Judge Derek Coster.
Good evening, sir. I am pleased to report I have nothing beyond the standard monthly printed report in the supplemental material, unless there are any questions that I could answer.
No, I thought it was a good report. Glad to see that there is quite a few traffic violations coming through. We appreciate the deputies and Sheriff's Department for keeping an eye on those things, and appreciate the court processing now.
Well, thank you, sir. The sheriff's office is always wonderful to coordinate with, so it moves smoothly.
Any questions for the day? Okay, thank you, Judge Coster. City Attorney?
Nothing else to respond to.
City Attorney?
No report.
City Treasurer?
No report.
City Public Works Supervisor? Water Operator, City Engineer?
Doctor. Contractors working on our landfill, I'm not finished on the landfill. Things are going good, they're doing a great job, and some of them, and I think they're anticipating by the end of the week that they'll be done with Capel Ditch, and they'll start doing more brackets stuff possibly next week. All the street project, as I've expressed, has a full plan to do, first part June here, and so we're working diligently to meet the deadlines on that. And the other thing I've been working on this last week was, we're just gathering some stuff on that industrial park, so that we have every minute, so we have to be done, and when that pump station shows up, we'll be ready for it. Any questions for me?
Thank you. City Building Official?
Good evening. At the last meeting, I promised to do a printed report this meeting. Well, I like it, so we're not getting one. They did a major update to our permit software system, so needless to say, everything's broken, so we're hoping to get that back in operation. Thank you.
Item five, report, the city council, Councilwoman Williams Harper.
Nothing at this time.
Councilwoman Elliott.
I have nothing to report.
Councilman Carson?
No, thank you.
Councilman Crass?
Nothing to report.
I don't have anything above and beyond those, my report of the permits we've done. It's part of 5:30, so we are going to move on to the consent agenda at eight. We have bills from May 17th, 2023. Are there any questions or corrections anybody would like to make? All this goes that my department is required by the Department, it's paid by the city. It doesn't get treated differently than anybody else, and I don't quote on this anywhere, so this closed. I'll move to motion.
I'll add a motion.
Motion from Councilman Trask, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. We'll move on to the new business. We're going to start with item four. Mayor Robertson, City Treasurer, HR Director Trask, discussion for possible action approval of interlocal agreement for police protection between the city of Ely and White Island County, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. My understanding that this was approved unanimously by the commission yesterday. Appreciate the committee's work on this, and certainly staffs. But on this, these are always big reviews, and we appreciate the help of the Sheriff's Department working on all of those things. Are there any questions or anything that you would like to add or ask?
I'd just like to add, I was a part of the negotiation team on this, and it's very pleasant to, I am able to work with the county on these items and come to an agreement. It was very pleasant this time. I agree.
I'll echo that as well, it's been my first time on any of these, it was, I felt like it was very technical between both parties, and it seems like it's doing something that works for both sides, so.
Okay. There are no comments, all in favor? I'll move to approve. Carson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Trask, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. Item five, Mayor Robertson, City Treasurer, HR Director Trask, discussion for possible action approval of interlocal agreement for shared animal control services between the city of Ely and White Island County, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2028. Any questions or anything the treasurer would like to add on this?
Not so much to add, but just to say it was another contract that we worked out really well together with when putting this together, so I'm happy with it. If you have any questions on it.
If not, all in favor? Motion? Motion from Councilman Trask, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Elliott, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. Item six, Mayor Robertson, Fire Chief Store, discussion for possible action approval of mutual aid agreement for fire emergency medical services between the city of Ely and the Ely Shoshone Tribe. This had actually been voted on, well, the direction had been given by the council a couple of years ago. It took us a little time to get around the city down with them. The objectives of increasing the amount since this agreement had been booked out in 20 years was achieved with the provision that it also, it has a regular annual increase, which going through the minutes is the two main objectives that the council wanted to outline to this. In the summary that was provided there in the backup documentation, you'll see that the council initially proposed to double that. The tribe countered with an increase to $9,000, and they agreed to the increase as well. The Ely did a good job making sure we brought that agreement up to date with some modern language and addressing what actually was happening in the agreement rather than the aspiration that would have been put into the original agreement that hadn't been done, so. Go on, entertain. Any questions about that?
I don't have a question. I have to say, I was just impressed with the policy, so I will make that motion.
Motion to approve from Councilwoman Williams Harper, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. We will move back up to item two. Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, review acceptance of programming report to the Ely City renovation project by Paul Cavan Architects LLC. I will note that we have Paul Cavan on Zoom call tonight, and just as a bit of a precursor here, so this is the end result of phase one of our process. Mr. Cavan interviewed staff twice, we had meetings with the public on what they wanted to see as part of the renovation. We'll go through a little bit of that with you. The objective here is, his report outlined our space needs and provided a kind of loose outline for how we'd like to proceed forward with the next phase, which will be producing construction drawings and then making sure everything works and giving it the detailed details of things. So, this is, by no means, what you've been provided is by no means, you know, a set of stone construction type of, here's absolutely what's happening down to the last detail. It's more of a, hey, this is kind of the flow they're looking for, here's how they got everything fitted in the building. I was pleased that we weren't going to have to build in addition to accommodate everybody, and they've come up with several creative solutions of things, so I'll turn it over to Paul Cavan, who's on Zoom. And if any of the council members have questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to respond to those. Mr. Cavan, you here?
Yes, I can come here.
Great. Take your own.
So, my further recommendation is Paul Cavan, and the one protect, and I see that you can be to provide this programming report. That day, we pretty much covered everything, we've done, I'd just like to add, I have the whole design team out there, the construction engineer, mechanic engineer, plumbing engineer, hardware engineer, both myself, and we basically went over, I want to say every square inch, and quite every square inch, but we did a thorough view. It all mentioned that it was covered prior to producing. But anybody asking questions of you so far, you might ask a few.
Are there any questions?
I guess I do have a question. Was there any soil stabilization back here?
That was part of a historic search report that did soils test and provided the results of that and some options. The mini reading details of how they'll do that, given the soils report. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, it will be part of the construction drawings?
That's correct, and so there was, so it's prepared that our structural engineer looked at, and there were mental solutions for that in our structure, also added, just generally, as I have said. If we do move forward, the construction office will start.
Your roles are kind of coming in and out a little bit there, Paul, but my understanding is that the structural engineer will be providing kind of the details of that during the construction phase of this design process?
Correct.
Okay. What I liked about the proposal they came up with is that it allows for a couple areas that will be historically renovated to as they were originally, so the hallways, the stairway, the council chambers will be able to be treated in a more faithful, historic type of way, while making our office areas more modern and accommodating to business in 21st century. They were like a child cellar, we can bring that up. Well, I think we are, but it's just going to be cold. But they were able to, Councilman Spear, when we started this, had expressed some concern, and had come to our public forum as well to express some concern about how things like elevators and things were incorporated, and I think they came up with a really great idea of kind of an atrium on the back that allowed for a real nice visual aspect to the building. It's going to look really nice. And I was honestly surprised how much space Paul and his group raised, time to accommodate all of the needs that we kept throwing out, and I was really impressed, so. Are there any questions for Paul? So, what will happen if the council chooses to approve this report tonight, it will be finalized and turned into SHPO. They'll review that, and then we'll move on to page two. Paul Cavan has a very long relationship, long time relationship, working with the State Historic Preservation Office. They know him well, and I don't anticipate any problems with their review on that, and I'm looking forward to the next phase here.
I guess I just have another question, looking at these plans. So, what do we do with Mr. Craycraft and all his stuff?
Well, Mr. Craycraft, as you recall, had a promotion, and so his office is upstairs on the second floor.
Sure.
But as far as public works, the thought was that this NIPOMA project that's going to be taking place in the park will be accommodating space for public works to store their equipment, and a lot of what they do over here right now.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Councilman Carson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Paul.
Good morning, Mayor.
Let's see, we're still a little bit before 5:30, so we are going to move on to item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, update on planning for the Nevada City for two retreat to be held on Ely, in Ely, June 8th to 10th, 2023, with approval to spend up to $4,000 in the community service funds on the event to augment the League's commitment.
I, oh, go ahead, I'm disappointed that part of this, I'm part of the core market, because of the fact that part of these funds may come to me, I am going to abstain from voting on this.
Thank you. The League is, in discussions with the League, we decided not to ask registration fees for people based on the fact that they may have to travel quite far, and for our quarter in Nevada, we want to encourage attendance. They pointed up $2,000. Most of our events will be donated at times, so this is really just to cover any space rental, you know, food requirements. Everybody's paying for their own hotels, but there were approximately over, Treasurer passed about, over $3,000 still uncommitted in the community services funds. And so, in discussion with the other council members who are helping plan this, we thought we'd ask for up to $4,000 from those funds to augment that from the League, to make sure that we were quite good hosts for the other cities that will be coming to this. And we do have 13 members confirmed with three more who will be coming, as well as a lot of our local leaders and state officials that come out, just like that. Are there any questions? If not, all in favor?
I'll take it.
Motion from Councilwoman Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Williams Harper, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. It's 29, so we will go down to item seven, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action approval of collective bargaining agreements between the city fire department and operating engineers over three, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. This was a lengthy process, but I think we came up with a good product in the end. Tangent, as a tangent to the discussion on the contract, there's also the MOU about the schedule. The fire department union is willing to go back to four shifts that they were on a year ago. We had some good discussions with them, and I think both parties came to a good compromise, where we stay on the three shift schedule so we don't have to hire two more people. But we were also able to come up with a bit of a different arrangement. They got them more of what they wanted, principally days off, without having to hire more people that were having trouble hiring anymore. But any of any questions, and if you have anything to add, and if there are no questions, all in favor?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Councilwoman Williams Harper, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Trask, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period is ordered. We will move up to item six, mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for public hearing at 5:30. Following comments, item one, Councilmember City Treasurer Trask, public hearing discussion on the adoption of the tenant dividend for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, as final, whether it be submitted to the Department of Taxation, which runs NRS 354.598. I was still appearing, so we'll take comments from the public on assignment.
Oh, can we ask questions now?
Please.
Just, I guess it would be directed to.
You all have to come up with.
Oh, sorry. To, my name is Janet Shoemaker, and I have a question. I guess this would be directed to Mr. Hope Coven. That notice that was drafted and.
This is just comment on the budget that we're trying to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was just, oh, the comment.
No, just for the budget. That's okay.
Are you going to have that, though, for the moment?
At the end of the meeting.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Are there any comments on the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, regarding the typical budget for police protection, I want to know what you're going to pay the county and what conditions are you going to specify in the agreement. I want to know if there's a mandate and provision providing for victims for those that have suffered different losses, have not received restitution, and have not been given incarceration by the legal system. There is a lot of selective enforcement, and they must stop. Does it direct what you're going to pay? I'd like to know. Does it direct any of the other comments I had? And again, I want to know. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to have anything else to add? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we will move on to item seven. Discussion possible action, items pertaining to the public hearing. Council members, City Treasurer Trask, discussion for possible action, adoption of the tenant event for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, as final, budget to be submitted to the Department of Taxation pursuant to NRS 354.598. Treasurer Trask.
Do you have any questions? Do you want me to go through it, or you're pretty clear? If I've given you enough information?
That's the amount we have in there for police protection, considering that there's one.
Yes.
Okay. I assume that the item that I saw in there, the line item four, police protection, is based upon a agreement that was approved on?
Yes. We believe this whole worksheet boggles through for every fund that we have, for every special fund, the general fund, and um, it's a budget. That we try to stick this closely to, but in the past, we all know it gets changed. But for the most part, every fund is finishing, projected to finish with a decent balance, and revenues, I will say, are a little bit down, but not as much as I, they were going to, mainly the CTX. But it's pretty comparable what we've gotten this year. Your road taxes did go down a little bit, they've gone down each year a little bit, but for us, even $300 is huge in that fund.
Well, your budget would be affected is item 17 about dissolving the railroad underpriced fund.
Yeah, all of that will do is the money that's in there.
Is it a general?
It will, it basically, it's an handsome that will be put in. It's just a general entry to take your money there over to put under the general funds assets.
The only money that's currently in that fund is just the recording of the asset value?
Yeah, there is no physical, every cash money, it's just a value that was placed on that run.
Any other questions?
Can I just, please, that budget that we, if it's put?
It is in there, and that is, excuse me, I'm glad you didn't say that. I did, in the budget that you guys had, show 760, I did change that. So there was one change from what was given to you guys for public information, because we had come up with an agreement that was to be voted on, and you guys voted on it. So I did change that to the actual amount that was in that contract.
Do you know that actual amount?
Uh, yeah. It'll be on page number 14. Yeah, on page 13, it said the total is 764,000 and $4,000. Did I say that right?
Yeah. Any other questions? All in your hand.
I want to show them.
Um, motion to approve from Council on Allen, second from Council on James Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Paul. Carry this to order. We have, we'll move to the one, new business, council members, who, Sheriff Scott Henry, discussion for possible action, approval to direct City Treasurer Trask and organs, for the lead of handsome, sexualized entertainment, adult performances driven, and nudity within the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Awesome. Appreciate it. Um, just kind of give you a little backstory on this, how it was brought to my attention. There's, um, one of our local bars held an event where there were strippers involved. And unfortunately, during the event, an alleged crime took place, which is very serious that we had to send officers and some detectives over there to do some investigation on that. So as we were briefing on the, on the crime that was reported to us, we started a conversation about, does the city regulate this? Does the city issue special permitting and stuff to allow these events to take place? And so I reached out to City Attorney Kahoon and asked if the city was issuing special events for strippers to be performing at a bar that holds a business license and a liquor license, but no other special event license to my knowledge. And Mr. Kahoon informed me that the city did not. And so my questions were him, and as I started doing some research, I started looking at other counties and how they handle these types of businesses and how they're regulated. Of course, we always look to Clark County at first because we know the entertainment capital that they are and these type of businesses being operated there. They are extremely regulated by city and county ordinances. They go into districts, they go into age of licensed performers and all these things. So my conversation with Leo was basically asking him, I think the city needs to follow these same guidelines, because right now, you know, if the city council just said, hey, you guys do whatever you wanna do, any business within the city, you can have the same event, your local grocery store, your truck stops, whatever it is, they can just say, hey, you know what, tomorrow, we hired this group of people to come in and perform a strip show. You know, and what's the guidelines on that? Do the windows have to be covered? Do they have to be in the districts such as our brothels have to be? What are the hours? You know, if they held an event during lunch hour, we'd have every kid in town walking by, peering in windows and watching what's going on in our community. Do the performers have to be licensed? Visibility, you know, do they have to have security at these events? What type of genitalia can be exposed? You know, and all these things, and the ordinances I looked up are covered. You know, they're very specific about, they can't touch the dancers. They have to be certain distances from the dancers. You know, no other people can participate when the, so we had during this event was, we actually had locals participating and removing their clothing during the event. So it just wasn't the dancers, it was quite a free-for-all at some times going there. So my, my suggestion would be really to, for the council to take these into consideration and work with the city attorney in order to provide some type of ordinance within the city that regulates this, so that we can say, you know, if you're gonna hold these events, here's the rules that have to take place. And then once they know the rules, then, you know, we can move forward with this. So that's my, my request is to have something on the books that says, you either can do it or you can't do it. You know, that's up to council, but we just need some guidelines, because literally what they're doing right now is against the law. It's a gross misdemeanor for public nudity, okay? Plain and simple. Go to your NRSs and look it up, and man, they're pretty strict on it. Second offense is a felony. So, yeah, we're looking at some violations that are occurring here that need to be regulated, and they can be regulated by city ordinance. So that's what I'd like to have Mr. Kahoon do, is to work with council ideas, look at other ordinances that are throughout the state of Nevada, and just basically say, this is what we do, so.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Did you happen to look at any other counties in Nevada?
I looked at their ordinances. Yeah, that's what I did. I went online, there, you know, you can bring up their ordinances and see the restrictions.
Were they all pretty comparable to Clark, or was there, what was kind of what you saw?
I would say yes, yes, because they, they really talk about what can be exposed, when it can be exposed, log zonings involved, licensing, for the business and for the, for the dancers. So there's, there's quite a bit of stuff out there that you can look at.
Have you had problems before this incident that the sheriff's office has been dealing with in relation to these shows?
Consider we have, I mean, we constantly always get, you know, the scuffles and stuff that goes on. This was the first one that really brought to the attention of really what's going on during these types of events. The alleged allegation of the crime that was committed is, like I say, very serious. And then as we investigated that, we found out that it just wasn't the dancers that were performing. It was local residents that, you know, were on top of bars and tables, just paying clothing or clothes. So it's like, timeout here. Who's licensed to do what? What's going on? You know, let's, let's get a handle on this, because this just isn't right.
Can you give me a little bit of timeline on the cease and desist that happened on this? Because from what I'm hearing, I agree, Sheriff, that we do need to have this conversation. I think it is one, I do want to talk about this cease and desist just a little bit on this, so just kind of the timeline on it, and I mean, listening to you, it sounds like we kind of are in LEO at the moment, right? We don't have anything on books, this is one way or the other. So I, I guess it kind of goes to Leo too, because I believe Leo was part of the cease and desist as well. So I just, I guess the timeline on it, kind of what ordinances we were, we were citing, or how this came about, just to make sure that I feel comfortable with that, so I guess, yeah.
I think the excitement of the cease and desist was from the first event, then we got the report of the crime, and we started looking into it. And I called him and said, hey, you guys issue special permits for this? And the answer was no, and then like, the next day, they posted on Facebook that they're having another event, two events, actually back to back. One was Mel, and one was Keenan. And I'm like, oh, well, wait a minute. The city's not sanctioning this and issuing permits. This is against the law. We can't allow this. This is public nudity. So that's when I reached out to Leo and said, hey, I'm not sure what we're doing here, because we can't just turn a blind eye and say, well, you guys had it this time or this time, and you know, now it's brought to our attention, so it's like, this can't go on until it's regulated. So that's why the cease and desist order was.
What's your, what's, what did you, what was the cease and desist from?
Eric.
What was the background that was presented to them?
What, what does it consist of?
Yeah.
I have it here right here from the beginning.
It's essentially a cease and desist that, that the activities that they had planned for that weekend needed to be canceled in order, in, because of the laws that were cited, but also so that we could have this discussion and potentially regulate it to some extent. Because right now, there are a number of provisions throughout our code in NRS, like Sheriff Henry spoke to, that would prohibit this activity. But it, it sounds like there may, there may be a, an interest in not outright prohibiting it, but just regulating it to an extent, and have something specific to our code that addresses this form of business or activity within the city, so.
When did that first event take place?
It was the weekend before.
Okay. That's when they had the allegation that you're talking about?
Correct.
So I, I guess in the business's mind, because they're the cease and desist, and as you're saying, you're unsure of really what to turn, what to do, although you know some things are inappropriate and so forth. They're wondering how long this is gonna take before.
That's up to council. I don't, I don't do that, not you guys.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm just asking, was that, was that a question that they had? What, I mean, cease and desist, for when, forever, for how long?
Um, I think in the.
What are we owed to this business to tell them?
Well, depending on what occurs tonight, if this, the city does nothing, then based on the, the current statutes and city code provisions, I would say that this activity shouldn't persist at all in the future. But depending on if the city would like to direct myself to look at other ordinances throughout the state of Nevada and bring something back to the table to regulate this type of activity, then, I mean, we can get it done as, as soon as we can get something passed, which is around two months.
Can I? I have a question too. I'm a, I maybe need an ordinance too for equity safety and guidelines, but did you look to, if we didn't have ordinance and anybody would do it, like the gas stations, blah, blah, blah? But it's kind of illegal right now, right?
Correct.
For you?
And that's under NRS, not necessarily.
There's, there's a couple NRS provisions, and there's also a few provisions within our city code that, that suggest that that type of behavior is, is not allowed within the city. Just as an example, 5116 is entitled prostitution, but it sort of encompasses this type of behavior as well. So it says, no person within the city shall commit any act of prostitution or other lewd or, let's do this act. And then it goes on to describe what can and can't occur. And then even includes having that type of activity within a business outside the, the brothel district, the adult district.
But are, do we actually have a zoning board? Because I was looking at our zoning website. We have a definition for it, but there's not actually zoning for that?
So, yeah, there's, um.
We enforce that zone, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's no zoning as, as it relates to the building zoning? We regulate that through our business licensing system.
There is a.
So there's a commercial zone, but we only issue business licenses to businesses or engage in that in a certain area.
In our ordinance, there is a definition for adult entertainment zone?
Yeah, I'll speak to that briefly. So, so there is a definition for adult entertainment zone, but there hasn't been a designated zone for that. But under the same provision that I had just cited too, it does, specific to the brothels, it says that they can only be, um, let's see, within, it's, it's within that little block that they're located now, so High Street, Second Street, and First Street, and the west side of First Street. So it actually gives the dimensions of where those buildings can, and that activity can occur within the city. So.
But that's a, that's a business license regulation through our code, not a zoning license regulation through our building department, if that makes sense? Yes.
Technically. I mean, it's under the police regulations, but it is regulating that form of business.
I see, so. So previous councils were allowing this under the assumption that entertainment was part of their business license, this business in particular, were allowing?
I don't know what previous councils were allowing or disallowing. It was my understanding that, that previous cease and desist orders have been sent, but I can't speak to that one way or the other.
Because that would predate all of us here.
Yeah.
Okay. You don't have any other questions, though?
No, they never have.
So what's, what's on the agenda tonight is for the council to either, to consider directing you and the sheriff to come up with a draft of an ordinance that they could review. Okay. Are there any further discussions with council owners?
Do you want to give Leo any thoughts on that, or just let him draft something and agree with that to us?
I think the thoughts on that should, I, I think looking at the draft first and then being able to say, yeah, we're okay with that, no, that looks too restrictive, and then having that discussion. I don't know that, I mean, if you've got something specific you'd like to see.
No, I just, I was just wondering.
And I, I might say that if, if we decide that something needs to be drafted, we have access, I would probably like to see what it is you're drafting, and then have someone's other ordinances, so we can make a comparison.
Of the other counties and cities, right?
Okay, I would like to, Clark, obviously, because that's, but I would like to see someone maybe even more rural. Yeah, I know, I bet one number has.
One of the other ones, I'm sure you can, is Mesquite.
Has a lot.
Mesquite has.
Mesquite has one, but I just found it a, and kind of, within, they've been in the city for like 20 years.
So, uh, well, I'm just trying to think, I mean, kind of go back to what the councilwoman Harper had to say, was the fact that if we go, well, I agree that we probably should go through this, but that still goes to cease and desist, two months at the earliest, out without. Just trying to give some direction to the business owners as well, because I could see why they felt blindsided in this, since they have been operating under the assumption that they're okay for a while, and that we've now just had, it sounds like our first major incident, I do agree, but I want to give them some sort of direction too, but, or, at least they know, I guess, what's going on. I kind of, I voiced my feelings about this before. The cease and desist doesn't sit well with me, but that is here, that's not what's on the agenda, so that's a conversation that's on this.
Yeah, the only, the only issue was until you have a city ordinance, so technically. Yeah, the only, the only issue was until you have a city ordinance, so technically. So it doesn't matter if there's a cease and desist order in the place?
I just, I just feel like.
They just can't do it.
I, I understand where that's coming from, but that wasn't, that wasn't enforced for, for so long, you know? So I, I see where it's coming from. I get it and it was brought to the attention because of this, but at the same time, they, I feel like there could have been better timing to this situation, um, that could have been a better, a way to go about this, not blindsiding your business because of how we feel. And that's, that's the issue I have.
Yeah, and, and I understand that the problem is, is once a violation is observed or reported, we just can't turn blind eye.
Well, right, and I think that we, we, we could, uh, rather is what, is my personal opinion.
Yeah, and I wish this definitely would have been like next month.
Right, and I think that, I think that's the big issue. I agree that this, this needs to be happening, uh, this conversation needs to be happening. I feel bad for a business that has sure not been operating under the assumption that this is okay. And then now it's not. And so, and it's costing them some money. We all know that's, especially small businesses, that's going to hurt. And so they plan ahead and so that, that part is what eats me. And so I do believe we need to go forward with this conversation, but I think that, that needs to be said. That, that will, I don't know if it was handled the best.
Yeah, I'll work with city attorney coming and try to quickly rid it of it. I mean, I think, you know, the thing is it's, we're not reinventing the wheel. So we have a lot of material that we can pull from, you know, we can put together and pull it with you guys and then you guys can pick it apart and come up with a good ordinance that, that's pleasing to everybody, so.
And to be clear, the cease and desist was just for this activity? The business is still operating?
Yeah, yeah, just, just for that type of activity.
Just for that type of activity or for the two more that they were going to have? I think that needs to be really clear.
Just in general, any kind of stripping, basically with the agenda item, uh, states erotic dancing, sexualized entertainment. So.
So I, I guess I have a question moving forward. If they were covered, let's say, we don't have to, do we have different businesses and NRS have a definite, like a pasty or something along those lines, would that be allowed?
I think it falls under exotic dancing.
We don't, but we don't have those right now, right? So then, so let's say in the month they had one where it wasn't nude, but it involved this like same concept, but wasn't nude. I was going to say they have Vegas, they have different regulations on it, depending on if there's alcohol or not, alcohol served and things like that. So I'm just wondering if they said, okay, we're having another event and next week, nipples we cover, genital be covered. We're good?
I think.
At the moment, at the moment.
I think under the city code that we have right now, um, that I cited too, it's still lewd entertainment essentially. It's still within that context of, of activity that would be prohibited.
So nothing would prohibit them from having, say, a man concert?
No.
But if someone was dancing and removing clothing, you would consider that?
That's lewd.
Under that definition?
Yeah.
Well, I, I guess I struggle with that. Well, lewd in one sense.
The Supreme, uh, U.S. Supreme Court.
Yeah, well, I think that's, I mean, they're struggling with it, right? Like, how are we making that decision?
Well, that's why we want to have specific regulations.
Right, and we don't at the moment, right?
Yes.
So I, that's what I'm trying to say is like, we're going to have this conversation. There are small businesses that may have other events coming up at summertime. There's things happening, right? We're getting cursed before July. Then if there was a way that was legal according to NRS's that involved these activities in a sense without the nudity, is there any, is there anything that you could do Sheriff that like? I, I'm trying to give them an option as well as we work through this situation without taking some.
Because you can help me out a little bit. Any patron that's getting warm can go inside the bar with a pair of shorts on and a bathing suit top on.
Right.
That's barely there and dance and no one's going to come and arrest them. So what you're saying is if the dancers are basically, some people might call it scantily clad, but still patron could come in like that and do that, but a dancer can't. So I'm just saying we owe something very specific to the business as we work through this to find out if it's legal or not. And we do know that in Vegas there are the, the pasty rules and the, and all of that kind of thing. So, uh, you know.
And that's why I was turning to you is because I'm not super familiar with NRS's. And so I'm trying to, try to find something that is compromised until we ourselves figure it out because obviously there is not a situation right now where we, you can go to, where we can go to, to be yourself.
Well, to minimize confusion, it would be my hope that, that all this, any kind of sexualized entertainment be halted until something's put in place to where we have a clear guideline of what is and is not allowed.
I feel like we're getting in trouble if we start to try to define sexualized.
Well, I mean, it's in our code, lewd is, you know, is, is hard to define.
What is lewd in a city?
So, so that's why I don't, I'm not here to, I'm not here to judge anyone, you know? If, if that's what they're going there for, as long as they're within the NRS, I don't, I don't feel like we have a big right, and I'm speaking for myself, to say nay because we think it's sexualized. But I, and that's my, that's where I'm coming from.
So to that count, that's not lewd to them?
Right.
For me to us if we're going.
I want to make sure we're following the law. I don't want, I don't want to put you guys in a bad spot either. That's, that's the last thing I want to do. If there's a way where there, if there's an answer and a bikini's on, is that sexualized or not? I don't, you know, I don't want to be that, that enforcement.
And there's no way to address that at this point.
Right, I think that I, I, I maybe oversimplifying this, but you know, I think there's a difference between someone who has gone to a bar dressed in a certain way versus someone who's being paid to remove clothing, whether or not it results in nudity in, in, in a suggestive manner. I think those are two different types of entertainment, well, not two different types of entertainment. I think one is a paid type of entertainment and one is just a person being a person.
Right, no, I think that it has to be a hired show. It's a hired show. They hire someone, I, I agree, I don't think patrons go in and start shooting. I don't, that I don't agree with, but if they're hired and the dancers are there and they're dancing, they're hired to be there.
Well, and like I said, I think, I think there's a difference between someone being hired to dance and someone who's being hired to dance and take their clothes off.
Right.
People are hired to dance off.
I, I, I agree with you, but what I'm saying is we can have a patron go in dressed as long as certain things are covered, just like that dancer that's on top of the table with the bar. So, and dancing, like the dancer, the only difference is one is paying, getting paid the money and the other isn't.
Yeah, the, the business is facilitating, um, entertainment and it's, it's paid entertainment and activity that's going on.
So it is a number.
I understand, I understand. There's a difference between a burlesque show and a paid dancer. I, I think those are pretty clear cut types of shows.
But I'm saying even if they were, let's say you were hiring a burlesque dancer, but with the assumption, understanding that they're not going to be nude, they're going with pasties and covered, their genitalic.
But you know the nature of burlesque show.
Yes.
It's, it's not the same as a, you know, a backer dancer for a, a concert.
Right.
It's just not.
Right, but I'm saying that I, I think that idea of burlesque shows are not, there's nothing in our code that says we can't do it. Also, this sounds like.
No, 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 burlesque show I think falls under sexualized entertainment. It is. No, am I, am I off base?
I know, I would, I would say it's a form of art, I don't know.
Uh, it may be, but it's still sexualized.
But I don't think moving to, that's where it gets hard to, you're trying to define sexualized. I don't think we can. I want to make sure of what we're doing while we're going through this conversation of what the, what our ordinance looks like, trying to give businesses some direction moving forward while we're doing that.
Well, if, if we're having that hard of a time defining that, I think to Leo's point and Sheriff's point, just making sure that that's cut off until it's defined so that we're not out on a limb and we're not addressing that, it's a virtual only way forward.
And again, I don't disagree with you, but I think they need to obviously know that we owe them. What can you do? I mean, there's one thing in getting a cease and, cease and desist while we work with this. They need to understand because maybe they don't. See, NRS says da, 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 you can't do this, you can't do this. If you do this, therefore this will happen. So, I mean, the cease and desist is everything without the knowing or not knowing, but they, they need to absolutely know what is acceptable and what is not on top of that cease and desist.
Are we getting a little off the agenda item?
Yeah.
I don't know how, I'm not, I don't know how we're going to define that tonight. I, I just.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying, I was just saying. You issued this, the cease and desist, I, I understand that. And I, I think we're all on the same pages. We need to work through this, but I guess our, I guess what I'm asking is everything they did was wrong. Therefore, because of what is in, in R S, they can't do it. That's what I'm asking.
I, I would like to invite Councilman Williams Harper and Congressman Trask to have this conversation with the attorney then.
That's fine.
Yeah, because I think that's where that will be most productive, whereas we can't define that tonight. But if you'd like to give some direction to the attorney on how, or, or have a conversation with the attorney on how we can go forward in the interim. But, um, for the moment, I, I definitely like to get an agenda or a motion on whether or not to proceed with requesting a draft on this.
Followed by approved.
Uh, motion, Congressman Carson, second from Councilman Elliott. As long as we have ordinances from outside the law.
Yeah, right.
We will figure that.
He betcha.
We will figure that.
Of course.
Fantastic. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Congressman. Uh, we'll move on to item eight. Mayor Robinson, City Attorney, whom discussion only, first reading ordinance seven four nine, bill number twenty twenty three dash zero three, proposed ordinance establishing city council's option to assign the public works director a supervisory role over the water sewer department, wastewater treatment plant, landfill and animal control. Um, this is in response to our conversation at Blue Island's meeting, but some of that was left out of the, uh, co-visit relates to the public works director. Yes, uh, I, I tried to do this the easiest way possible, but just by changing that, um, we have one paragraph that allows the city council to use their discretion to assign, uh, additional duties to the, to the public works director. And so I essentially just included, um, what, what already existed there was that he also be the park and maintenance director in the cemetery accident. So I just also included water sewer department, wastewater treatment plant, landfill and animal control.
And the streets are already in there, right?
I, uh, I believe so. Did, well, I might have to check that, did I miss one?
No, I, I believe they're in there, but I missed streets, but that'll break it too because I said that tonight before the meeting.
Okay.
It doesn't specifically say street.
Yeah, was that the one that I missed? Is the, is he over the street department as well? He's, he has a lot of responsibilities.
I, it's, it was a very wordy motion, I, yeah.
It says repair and maintenance of the streets.
Repair and maintenance of the streets, okay. I can make that small change and then we'll bring it back for the second reading on the next one. So I'll.
Thanks.
Any other discussion on this night? If not, we'll move on to item nine, Mayor Robinson, City Attorney, whom discussion only, first reading ordinance seven fifty, bill number twenty twenty three dash zero four, proposed ordinance updating, I think title one, chapter six, section one E of the E L C code, increasing of twenty official salaries. This is a discussion on mine, but I believe this is also in response to the council action from last fall. It is, yeah. It's just codifying what the council did previously. And this is increasing the range as they're in the code. Any discussion? I think it was a track.
Thanks.
Hard to feel limited. Okay, great. Uh, with that, we'll move on to item ten, Congressman Carson, discussion for possible action approval of resolution twenty twenty three dash zero six to eliminate commercial metal disposals, please.
All in motion.
A motion from Councilman Trask, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Congressman Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Carried in so order, item eleven, Councilman Elliott, Public Works Supervisor Craycraft, discussion for possible action approval to use up to ten thousand dollars in community service funds for weed treatment. This is, can you someone explain the story unless you have something you want to add? We have a lot of water, we have a lot of weeds.
Yes, we do. It's pretty, yeah, we're just going through our curtain, turning around to the eastern, right? An aquifer, I got another thousand dollars there too. Which like did a good job on these weeks.
Are they going to start that pretty quick?
Well.
Depending on what happens to us. Uh, all in favor of the motion?
I'll vote approve.
Motion for Congressman Carson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Congressman Williams Harper, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Item twelve, Councilman Alworth, Councilman Elliott, discussion only, updating on quarter group efforts on the city's behalf to secure federal state funding.
Um, we don't really have a date, we're just waiting to hear back from our other projects, so.
I, I will report that I did get a call from Senator Rosen. Uh, she was very excited to support all four projects that we proposed and her and, um, Senator Cortez, they're still are just for the type of support that we're hoping to get. And it is off, I assume.
Cool.
Okay. Item thirteen, Councilman Alworth, discussion for possible action approval to request White Pine County manager to attend the June eighth, twenty twenty three city council meeting to provide an update on White Pine County housing projects on Seventeenth Street and Hart Avenue. Councilman Alworth requested this item, um, just to get an update on where that was going. And we've had some questions and, um, some bureaucracy around those in the past as they relate to, uh, city code and everything else. So we reached out informally to see if we can.
I, I did talk to, uh, Manager Weevil a few days ago. He says, um, he doesn't know that he has a lack of update on. And he's, uh, you know, frustrated by the slowness of the project as well, but said he or somebody could probably kind of say that in the video.
With that, I'll take it off.
No, but approve.
Motion for Congressman Carson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Congressman Harper, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Item fourteen, Councilmember City Treasurer Trask, discussion for possible action approval of twenty twenty three debt management policy. My understanding, this is apparently formulated piece of bureaucracy that we have to do on campus.
Yes, this is just one that's updated on the early basis, this sent to the state or something and that we're keeping up on our debt and, you know, we can imagine as. And one nice thing about this was that we paid off all our loans except our water bond and our sewer bond. So they're longer included in here.
And our water and sewer bond, but they're going to be with us until.
Forever.
But it's kind of a crisis, so we'll have to take care of that, I guess. Uh, any, any questions? All in favor of the motion?
All in favor of the motion.
Motion for Congressman Alworth, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Congressman Trask, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Carried in so order, item fifteen, Councilmember City Treasurer Trask, discussion for possible action approval of resolution twenty twenty three dash zero seven to dissolve the railroad enterprise fund. Uh, all in favor of the motion?
All in favor of the motion.
Motion from Councilman Elliott, do I have a second?
I got a second.
Second from Congressman Carson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Carried in so order, item sixteen, Councilmember, uh, Building Official Peterson, discussion for possible action approval of resolution twenty twenty three dash zero eight establishing a fee to reopen building permits for construction projects issued under currently amended codes. Uh, so I did a bit of research and kind of settled on something that wasn't overly punitive. It wasn't overly forgiving, um, but, you know, we pass it and we'll be able to help folks out without them coming up to the building department and in the heat of the evening making it rain. So, um, it'll help folks, uh, and, uh, it'll encourage them at the same time.
And just to be clear, they, if they came and said they're waiting on a contract or the, do they?
So, so you can extend your building permit for free.
Okay.
All you have to do is give us notice of writing and give us a reason. And that's, that's, I just didn't have a mechanism to reopen it without full charges.
Well, even if they're waiting for a contractor, they don't have to pull permits already to start.
Correct, correct. But some people, they get there early and then they just forget about the, okay, the extensions, so.
So they can file extensions.
Yeah, correct, correct. Okay, any questions? All in favor of the motion?
All in motion.
Motion for Congressman Trask, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Congressman Elliott, any further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, aye, aye.
Any votes? Thank you. Uh, item nine of a comment, would you have comments on anything under the sun?
Oh.
Any limitations?
Um, so from, what I gather that's been said here, this cease and desist order was, um, based on something that doesn't really exist. Is that correct?
No.
You said you got it drafted now.
Those are specific regulations. As of right now, technically that activity is not committed within the city.
Since when?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what previous administrations did. It's my understanding that there were cease and desist letters sent.
No.
But I can't say yes or no.
And I think they're doing this for twenty years. The only thing she was ever told, make sure you blackout the windows. And anybody who goes in there, they, they know they're gonna see a girl dance in or fast, you know, whatever the case. They gotta pay twenty bucks to get in, there's somebody at the door, making sure there's no minors there. So it's like, I mean, I, to me, this is really unfair, and especially the timing, two hours before the show is supposed to start. They've known this for twenty years, she's been doing this and everybody knows. The allegation he's talked about, I know about. And I've, if I'm not mistaken, well, maybe I should have a private conversation, uh, if that person moved out of town.
Yeah, I have to, you know, speak to any specifics on that case.
Okay. But anyway, can you be charged, or based on something that's, or just somebody complaining? Doesn't it have to be proved?
Well, then, that's what happens when, if a complaint is filed, then it would be, if it's filed as a criminal misdemeanor, it would go to court to be proved.
Yeah, well, then you could shut, you shut it down based on something that hasn't even been proved, and I thoroughly believe this is not true. I mean, I've worked for Gary for a long time, and I know these stories go around. You ask somebody, well, were you there? Did you see it? Well, no, so-and-so told me, and so-and-so told them. So most of these are all hearsay. And like, like I said, I know that's specific.
Well, but there's an ongoing investigation, so.
But then, but then you're basically closed down for an ongoing investigation, cause she lost.
So you're, to be clear, you're not getting a cease and desist, this business did not get a cease and desist.
Yes, it did.
Please, this, 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 this business did not get a cease and desist order because of the investigation. They got a cease and desist because the city does not have any regulations that allow this kind of event.
But they can't say you can't do it, and she's like.
Yes, we can. NRS says they can't, and we decided they can't, because we don't have the regulations allowing it, and that's what we need to put into place.
If she's been doing it for twenty years and now all of a sudden you're telling her something that.
Well, she shouldn't, and that's the point.
Nobody ever saw it before, and she talked, came to whoever, or she talked to, and said, what, this is what we have, we have dancers. Um, we, they said blackout the windows, and it's not from the public, it's not public.
Thank you, that's your turn.
Pardon me?
That's your turn, that was the one. If you have specific questions, I would encourage you to talk to the attorney. Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I got a convoy insurance left, unfortunately. Showed you a picture, I happened to be driving on Avenue C, May twenty-second, and I see a woman taking off her top. The other one I've dumped is blurry because the guy behind me was helping me to get out of the way. That person was down to an undergarment on the top, and I thought, wow, no business license, no blackout curtains. I'm gonna get a good shot. I'm gonna bring it back to you in color and show a lot more, but selective enforcement has got to stop. Mr. Mayor, at last RPC made an change, but he was given a variance that is in conflict with minimum fire code setbacks. There needs to be a minimum five feet to the side on Eleventh Street. Presently, the owner is on the property line and does not meet the code that the city issued an notice to Aaron Hall. Now, the selective enforcement discrimination must be stopped. Rules, rules must be the same for public officials as required by those they serve. The owner arrived on the curbing gutter, excuse me, the sidewalk, and they were going after one individual, and you give a variance to a public official? That was there, it needs to stop. Mr. Mayor, as of today, I still am not receiving anything requested from the city regarding mandating City Clerk Jennifer Lee cease and desist encroaching on city right-of-way and impeding the handicap access. Mr. Mayor, I'm concerned about the solar project, uh, that was presented by Silicon Ranch. The solar panels create thermals that may affect aircraft and possible cancellation of the gliders that have been coming in for years. They can move somewhere else, but not in and around the airport. Mr. Mayor, I've yet to receive any information in regards to the complete list of properties and individuals that the city is permitting them out to park RVs on the city lots and some streets. When I took those pictures going to Avenue C, I was going after another picture of RV. I'm on the OTC mission, I've not seen one permit, yet I get citations for putting an RV or a fifth wheel on a flock off the street. You guys got to stop the discrimination. You need to pay me for lost revenue. I'm not gonna sit still for a double standard. Mr. Mayor, the corner of my carpe of, uh, seven ten, I have my Jeep, I still have a one-foot drop coming off the parking lot. Putting a second curbing gutter on top of the initial curbing gutter does not meet code. That's a violation. You should be corrected. I'm asked for a permit because your city attorney said, city engineer said, please get a permit on the parking.
Mr. Chatchis.
Correct. I need some answers there.
That's your three minutes, thank you. Is there any other public comment? If there's not more close public comment, then any motion, would you?
Little bit, yeah.
Motion. Carson, second from Councilwoman Elliott. All in favor?
Aye.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reporting.